Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our second work session this afternoon. Today is Wednesday, January 17, 2024. This particular work session is regarding performance measures in the area of public safety. We have a variety of really smart folks assembled, and I will introduce folks on this side of the table, then we'll turn it over to you all. My name is John Kofalis, Laramo County Commissioner from District One, joined by Kristin Stevens, Commissioner from District Two, and Commissioner Shadak McNally will join us, I think midway through, I believe. We're also accompanied by our Assistant County Manager Lori, Lori Kadrich, who is serving as the County Manager this week. And once again, Lori, give you the opportunity, any wisdom you'd like to share to queue this up, and then we'll turn it over to Julie, I believe.
I think we'll just turn it right over to Julie, since we have so much to cover.
Okay. Great, thank you. And again, if folks know the routine, please make sure to introduce yourselves for the record, and it's wonderful that you're here. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Julie Elser. I'm the Data Program Manager, and I will be facilitating our performance measures presentation today. So today, we'll be hearing from the Public Safety Service Area. That includes the Coroner's Office, the Officer, Office of Emergency Management, the District Attorney's Office, Community Justice Alternatives, and the Sheriff's Office. Today, the Sheriff's Office was not able to attend, so we will have them present their performance measures at a future work session. So for today, it's these four groups, which means we have about 15 minutes for each group. That includes questions. Of course, if you, if we run out of time and you have more questions, I will be happy to facilitate getting answers for those after the session is over. So we can go ahead and begin with Community Justice Alternatives.
Good afternoon. Just for introduction purposes, my name is Emily Humphrey, and I'm the Director of Community Justice Alternatives. I have our Directors for Community Corrections and Alternative Sentencing with me today, and I think we're going to start out with Community Corrections, and Director Tim Hand.
I'm Tim Hand, Director of Community Corrections. I want to start with the, with the jail diverted days. As you can see, we're on track with our goal of 130. We continue to, to, to meet that goal. Our restitution over, over $600,000, which has trended up, and I, I would give that reason for the 644 last year and the 602 this year is our clientele is not paying their subsistence. It's being paid for them by the General Assembly and the Joint Budget Committee made that decision. So that's giving them the ability to pay more towards their restitution and their child support. Always proud to talk about our Community Corrections residential program. As you can see, we're hovering right around the 72 percentile of successful completion. And the green line on that graph shows, or the red one shows that that 57% is the state success rate, so you can see a considerable amount of difference between our results and all of the other community corrections combined. And I might add that our number, the, the 57% is not including Laramo County. So had they included us, I think, you know, they might have hovered around 60%. But that's a big deal to us with this, with the population we serve. Where we're struggling is with our AIM and Wellness. We have 48 individuals currently in our AIM program, either in Loveland or Fort Collins, and we have 25 in our Wellness program. Our performance measures on this population, we elected to take a little different approach to this because of this unique population. So we're doing harm reduction efforts by determining the, the level of risk. So they start with the level of risk, and then we want to see it decrease over time. The instrument is called the Level of Supervision Inventory, LSI, and it's performed on, or updated on each client every six months, or if something changes. And so that's not where we should be. We're falling short of the 20%, but we've already made some adjustments around how we're, how we're applying the LSI to our population, and I would anticipate that that will, that will be, be well over the 20% goal moving forward.
Is that it from, is that it from Community Corrections?
Yes, I believe so, unless there you have any questions.
Actually, I'll defer to my colleague, but I would respectfully ask Tim and others, if you could talk a little bit closer to the mic, that would, that would help me. That's great. You have such a lovely voice that we want to make sure we all, we all hear it. I have a question or two, but I'd like to see if Commissioner Stevens, if you have any questions, comments, observations.
Sure. Well, just want to say, I mean, thank you for the good work that you're doing. I mean, the percentage of offenders who successfully complete the program, those numbers are going up for us, and so that's fantastic. It speaks to the work that you do, and, and that you're taking care of the whole person in there, and not just, you know, housing folks. With the, with the AIM and Wellness Court offenders and those numbers being relatively low, I mean, this is, these are folks that are pretty hard, have been sort of hard to serve, have more acute situations going on in their lives. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure, and I'll ask Director Humphrey to join in too as well. But unfortunately, we've had a, a number of individuals sentenced to our AIM and Wellness program that have passed away this last year. And, you know, and as you indicated, this population is for the severe and persistent mental illness of our community. Frankly, probably the, the most individuals that are coming in and out of our jail on felony cases, that we really need to get them on medication, we need to get them stable, and that's what we're up, that's what we're up for.
Yeah. And what I would also add to that is, when you look at our specialty courts, the success rate is a lot higher than when you look at a Wellness Court statistic, because that hovers potentially around 30, 35%. And the reason being is this are the highest-risk, highest-needs individuals that are in the criminal justice system, that have that severe and persistent mental illness. And so that's considered an absolute success, even though that number looks to the, the average citizen as very, very low. It's really important to note that some of these folks are getting the services they need so that they don't reenter, but we're always there, and we never turn them away when they continue to come back to us.
And I might want to just add one other piece to that. We also run a residential dual diagnosis program for both men and women. We only have 12 beds for men and 12 beds for women. We run around about a 45% success rate, and again, these are individuals that have the co-occurring disorder, very, very difficult population to serve. And we're, frankly, we're proud of the 45% that we get in that, in those programs.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, just thank you. Thanks for the work you do. I know it's not always easy, but the outcomes are, are great, and I'm just, you know, I'm the biggest cheerleader for Community Corrections, so thank you.
Thanks. Question that I have, oh, could we go back to the previous? I think I have to ask this question every time. Regarding the first slide, number of days offenders were diverted from jail or prison? What the deal is, can you all hear me with this? It's more expensive, it costs more to keep people in jail, so I'm sure Emily, Director Humphrey has the answer to this question. If we're diverting people from jail cells, how much money are we saving the, the community, the public, the taxpayers?
Okay. What I can tell you is that an average day in jail costs approximately $175.78. For an individual to come through the Community Corrections program, it's about $101.26. Director Fox's work release program is $95.95 a day versus the traditional 175.78. We gave a presentation to the Commissioners, to you all, in December, and we gave you the first three quarters of last year of 2023. It didn't include the fourth, and we saved the county approximately $11,689,000 by coming into our, our alternatives to traditional incarceration. So we still have a quarter left of that, so you can kind of extrapolate out significantly more than the 11.6 million.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, Emily. If there's nothing else, I believe we can move on to alternative sentencing. We're trying to fi, follow the guidance of Julie, 15 minutes per Public Safety Area. You're on, Jill.
Jill Fox, Alternative Sentencing Director. I want to start out with talking a little bit about the number of days that were diverted from the jail. You can see that obviously we've not recovered from COVID quite yet. It is not a trend just with Laramo County. It is a statewide trend that work release departments in general have a lower population than previous to COVID. But you can see that we're making slight improvements in that. Even with the lower numbers, based upon the figures that Emily had just given you, we estimate that we saved about $3 million by having those days served in alternative sentencing programs rather than the jail. And those programs, just to remind everybody, include work release, work under midweekers, and electronic home detention. Of those custodial programs, we had 80% of our clients successfully complete the programs. That is down just a little bit from previous years, nothing that is too concerning. We're still at our goal or below, or above, but you can tell it kind of teeters between the 80, and obviously we had a high point of 86% during COVID. And then one figure that we're always proud of is our recidivism rate. So alternative sentencing has a 10% recidivism rate, and again, the definition of that is rearrest within one year of release from one of our programs. So when you look at big picture, one of the goals is to have people not come back in our programs. We're really making good headway in that area.
And, and I would comment on that. In regards to jail recidivism rates for folks going back into the traditional jail setting, it's about 42%. Now, when you look at that, we're basing our 10% on 500 individuals coming through in 2023, and they had nearly 10,000, so I'm going to put that in perspective, but it's significantly higher going back into the traditional jail than into, than recidivating from one of our non-traditional programs.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Jill?
No, sir, that is it. Any questions?
Yes, and we may have questions or comments. Commissioner, you're on.
Yes, Jill, thank you again for your work, really supportive of this work. I love that this work, you know, this alternative sentencing really allows people to keep their job and, and some semblance of their life, which is really important, and I think that that's, that's what leads to those lower recidivism rates, is that, you know, you are able to sort of, you know, keep a job, have more interaction with your family that feels like normal interaction versus, you know, behind a screen. So great program, and I just, you know, I suppose it will trend up after COVID at, at some point, but right now, not so much.
Not so much. And, you know, we're working with it, we're working with all the partners here in Eighth Judicial to make sure that everyone's informed about our, our programs, and our goal is to get as many people out of the jail that are qualified and able to be in our programs, to have them continue on, like you said, being able to work, attend treatment. Those things are super important, and they're, they can't have that same accessibility in the jail. So we just want to make sure that everyone's aware of the benefits of our programs.
Thank you.
I have a question and a reminder. My question is, what other criteria that do we consider when we determine percent of offenders who successfully complete the program? I assume recidivism rates are part of it, but what other criteria there, maybe, I'm assuming incorrectly? And then my reminder is, I believe when we had the work session in December, I had asked that, at the appropriate time, I'd like to do a, a ride along on the bus and pick up trash or do something? Okeydoke. How about the question?
The question first. That is solely based upon those that have not been revoked from the program. So the successful completion rates are those that have successfully complete the program on their last day being within our custody. So we do have some folks that maybe have a major rule violation, and we may revoke them to the jail for a period of time, but then based upon having a treatment plan with their case manager and time for reconsideration for the client, to be honest, to allow them to come back into the program. So they may finish the program successfully, but they may have had a hiccup along the way where they go to jail for a few days because of that hiccup. But ultimately, that successful completion rate is just based upon whether or not they finished their program in an alternative sentencing program.
And of course, the benefits of this are, are numerous and profound, but I mean, fundamentally, we, we do RISC assessments, and we determine these are folks who alternative sentencing allows them to be, keep their jobs, be engaged with their families. Isn't that correct, Jill?
That is correct. Our goal is to allow people to be successful in the community once they are done with their jail time, and the best way to allow them to do that is not to have any huge interruptions in their lives in the meantime. Obviously, you want to have suitable candidates in there. You want to make sure that it's not going to be a public safety hazard, both safe to our clients in the facility and to the public at large. But ultimately, our goal, these people are living in our community. When they get out of jail, let's have them not have any hiccups along the way and keep things as continuous for them while they're learning good actions along the way.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome, and you're welcome to come anytime.
Well, actually, that, you'll, we'll have to get the folks who schedule things working on that, and I prefer to wait until it's a bit warmer.
I agree with you.
Thanks, Jill. Thank you, Emily. I, I believe we can move on to the next area of public safety, and we are doing so well.
So we actually have two more sets of slides for Community Justice.
Okay. We're still doing well.
Are we still doing well? Okay, and you know I talk fast.
Well, and we, and we believe it, we believe in you.
Okay. So I, I have the opportunity, again, this is Emily Humphrey from Community Justice Alternatives, talking about pretrial. So if you look at our pretrial number of days the defendants were under supervision, that has gone down significantly, but that's actually quite a good thing, and let me explain why. When you look at the 587,000, number up above, the 587, is during COVID when a lot of individuals were released out into our care and supervision during COVID, and that was 40% higher than we normally had, and it was not sustainable for our staff. So the numbers are down to about 430, which is actually very, very manageable for our staff to really focus on the two points of being out on bond, coming back to court and not committing a new law violation. What I can say is why I believe that number's low at 430, still above our goal, is that we're educating the bench that not everyone needs to be on supervision just because they commit a crime and come through the jail. Best practices state that if you over-supervise someone that doesn't need that supervision, you make them worse, and so we're really taking a more educated look at these individuals. Do they actually need our pretrial supervision while out on bond or not? And so I think this is a really good sign for us. It's good that we're above the 400,000, but it's good that our numbers are coming down because the individuals who are placed on pretrial are more significant than they've ever been, so we need to kind of watch them a little bit more closely, if that makes sense. In regards to the percent who successfully complete our program, it's divided into two different areas. The first one that is in the red is failure to appear, missing a, a particular court date. And then the second one is the public safety rate, whether or not they've committed a new crime. And as you can see in 2023, our numbers went below the goal of 80%. What I can tell you is that there's been a couple of glitches along the way. About two and a half months during this year, the cell phone carriers stopped, they started blocking our text messages, and we had to have a campaign to, with Laramo County to figure out how to fix that. We've now fixed that with the cell phone carriers, but we had a couple of months where we weren't getting our text reminders out to folks. That made our numbers come up slightly. What I will tell you is that our average rate of failure to appear is about under 5%. Normally hovers around 4.5% failure to appear rate. That's double of what the court failure to appear rate is consistently for those that are not under supervision. So whenever we have a certain percent, you can almost guess that 100%, twice as much is where the court is in unsupervised individuals. So although that's in the red, it's still very successful. And then the last one is our public safety rate, individuals who have not committed a new law violation while out on bond. And again, we're above our goal by 4%, so good sign. Any questions on pretrial before we go to the next slide?
Thanks, Emily. Commissioner, do you have anything?
No, but Lori reminded us that we probably aren't on our time schedule, and so I'm gonna...
Yeah, so if, if I understood what Julie said first, is we have four different agencies that are going to report. Each one of those has 15 minutes, so this is the first agency, so we're a little bit over.
I appreciate clarifying that, so let's get with the program, folks.
All right. I'm going to go super fast then, okay? This is percentage who is, all of our Community Justice Alternatives have successfully completed our program. Our goal is 75%. We missed it by 1%. Still very high, very proud of that. In regards to the jail days diverted, again, we're down to 617, but that's still tremendous. And again, we already talked about the cost savings earlier. And then the final, final one is really interesting to see, that about 30% of all individuals who are sentenced in our, into Laramo County are in a non-traditional form of incarceration or programming with CJA. I will tell you that probation can overlap with us, so we have probationers that are also in our programs as well, as well as folks that are on parole as well. So it's not completely 100%, 30%, we kind of cover with other entities when they have more than one situation, so. But 30% for non-traditional forms of incarceration rather than traditional is outstanding, in my opinion, so thank you. Super fast.
Thank you, Emily. Is your agency, you've covered pretrial, community corrections, and alternative sentencing. We're good?
We're good.
Anything, Commissioner?
Just good work, thank you. And that is a good number to see. We don't, you know, we don't want to put more people in jail. We want to get them the help that they need to come back into our community, so good work.
And the one thing that I would say just before I end is, is I think the success that we've had at Community Justice Alternatives is directly correlated to the staff that we hire, the staff that are committed and dedicated. They do a really difficult job every single day, and they do it very, very well. So I just wanted to put a shout out to them, because I think the numbers are indicative of the great employees that we have.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for your team effort. It goes without saying, we're very grateful for your work. We will now move on to the next agency.
All right. We'll move on to the Coroner's Office, and this one just has one slide, so maybe we can do it in about 10 minutes or so to make up some time.
Yeah. I'm, excuse me. I'm Stephen Hanks, I'm the Laramo County Coroner, and yeah, I can keep it pretty, pretty short. We had a dip in our total number of autopsies last year from the year before, and the total number of deaths reported to us was also a decrease. But I think the structure of our office, kind of with Dr., Dr. White and myself, my chief deputy being a physician assistant, we're able to, to really analyze a lot of the cases and, and review them and kind of keep the autopsy numbers lower from growing as, as high as they, they could go. So I think that's a, a, a good thing for us to be able to do those reviews. We have seven full-time investigators responding or answering phones and investigating roughly about 430 cases each. So we try and keep that around 370, so they're investigating a lot, but some of those are just quick phone calls, and then the other ones are, are full scene investigations and autopsies. So we're, we dipped a little bit there, but we're above that 370 mark, and I think we're, we're keeping on pace and, and good numbers with previous years. Any, anything else or any questions?
That's it?
That's it. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Commissioner, questions? I, I think I may have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. Are we doing as, are you all doing as many sort of out-of-county or even out-of-state autopsies as you might have in the past?
We, we are. You, it used to be they would all come to Laramo County, so most of Wyoming and rural Colorado. Over the last few years, we've, we've split that with Weld County, so Weld County opened up their own morgue. So for, for one week, all those non-Laramo County cases go over to Greeley, and then the next week, they come over to us. So it's, there's been a, a drop there in some of those out-of-county cases of the last couple of years, but it's nice to have that, that help with Dr. Burson in Weld County.
And are, are there just fewer deaths? I mean, are there fewer just unexplained or deaths that happen? I mean, are the numbers dipping because of COVID, or is there another explanation?
There, there, there's fewer, fewer reported, so overall, I think just, yeah, few, fewer deaths last year than the year before, but, yeah, only 80 fewer reported deaths. And, and we've, some cases are, are non-coroner cases, they, they're in a hospital for a lengthy time, or, or, you know, they're under, under doctor's care at a nursing home, but those are all reported to us, so, so we keep track of those numbers and those, those names for, for when people call. But overall, it's, 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 it's pretty consistent. It's a, it was a little dip from last year, but I think last year was also an increase, a pretty good increase from the year before, so it's kind of balanced out.
Well, that, I mean, fewer deaths is good. What about suicides, though? Can you say which, what percentage of, of those cases that are reported might be suicides?
Yeah. Last year, we had, I want to say, I think we had 83 suicides last year. This year, I did a, a brief look at the, the numbers, and, and so the, the rough unofficial number right now was 66 suicides, so we had a pretty good dip in suicides. I'm, I'm, I have a Suicide Fatality Review Board that I, I work with the Fort Collins Police and Behavioral Health and, and the Laramo County Health Department to, to really look at all the suicide cases and, and help these other agencies develop programs and plans and, and populations that they can target and go out to. So I think getting that message out, kind of reducing the stigma around suicide is, is, is really helpful, and we're building really good partnerships with, with public and private entities.
I, I want to thank you for doing that. I think that's really important. It's, you know, it's one thing to collect the data and sort of like, what do you do with it once you, you know, are you making positive actions? And it sounds like you definitely are, so thank you for sharing that data out into the community and, and working with these nonprofits who, you know, are affected by these numbers and, and trying to reduce them even further, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I wish to acknowledge that Commissioner Shadak McNally has joined us. I wish to acknowledge that Commissioner Shadak McNally has joined us. I have a question, Stephen, and that is with regards to the first slide, cost of the office of the coroner per 100,000 residents. Given that we have closer to 400,000 residents, does that mean that the overall budget of the coroner's office is perhaps around $2 million, give or take? And how does that compare with other, you know, large county coroner's offices?
Yeah, I think our, our budget's pretty, pretty tight, but we have, we have one medical examiner that's salaried on staff now. And beforehand, we had Dr. Wilkerson and Dr. White together, so I think that was a big chunk of our budget was paying for medical examiners. And now we have Dr. White really just doing 99% of the work. If he goes on vacation or takes some time off, Dr. Burson from Weld County comes over and helps out, but I think that was a big, a big savings, just kind of consolidating down to Dr. White and bringing him on board with the county and having his salary covered that way.
Thank you, Stephen. One takeaway for me is that it seems like there's a lot of good collaboration, cooperation amongst the various coroner's offices around, around the state or certainly around the front range. I think that helps a lot.
There, there is. We have a Colorado Coroners Association, so we have good conferences, good trainings. That's kind of a regional medical examiner's office, is kind of how we've always operated under Dr. Allen. We've built up a lot of these really good relationships with coroners around the state, and we can, we can train them and help them grow and do their autopsies and build up those partnerships.
Thank you, sir, well done.
Thank you.
Anything else, colleagues? Then I believe we can move on.
Okay, we'll move on to the district attorney's office, and we're pretty close to back on schedule, so thank you, Steve.
Good afternoon, Gordon McLaughlin, Eighth Judicial District District Attorney. Thanks for having us here today. Looking at this first metric, this is our caseload. And so it shows felonies, misdemeanors, and petty offenses. Sort of two things to note, one is that felonies have been pretty consistent for the last couple of years, which, which makes sense to us. Petty offenses and misdemeanors have both ticked up a little bit this year. I think there are really two underlying reasons for that. One is the legislature has recategorized some felonies down to misdemeanors and some misdemeanors down to petty offenses, and so that's resulted in a little bit of that. But the other factor is that there's just been a bit of a post-COVID, post-George Floyd uptick in sort of active policing again. And I think that was down for a while, and now I think folks are settling a little back into sort of those normal citizen contact patterns that do result in some of those lower-level charges. Specifically, last year, I know I noted during this presentation that the Loveland Police Department misdemeanor filings had dropped really drastically over the last couple of years, and that also was due to some internal factors and some stuff going on with Loveland Police. Again, I think that is sort of leveling out and getting back to, to normal there as well. So I expect to see this probably tick up a little bit again next year. I don't know that it will ever return to that sort of 93, 9500 of pre-COVID, but it probably will keep ticking back up a little bit. The second graph shows what type of sentences folks have been getting. So probation, jail, and Department of Corrections, which is not necessarily all the types. We, as the commissioners probably remember, we started a data project about a year and a half ago, so it had gone live just before we reported to you all last session of this. And in fact, going back to our numbers a little bit, I think they've redone how they've sort of collected a little bit of this data, and so we updated some of our numbers from last year to sort of adjust what they now said, but they were all sort of pretty close. Anyway, on that online dashboard that is public, folks can see sort of all the panoply of sentencing options, but these are the main ones. What it shows here essentially is that probation and Department of Corrections and jail are all very similar to last year. There's a very slight downtick in Department of Corrections. Our goal is to be using those Department of Corrections sentences only for the folks that truly need to be sent to the Department of Corrections. We're going to be using any other alternative when we can, for instance, Community Corrections, that you obviously just heard the update about, and other options. It is, you know, very similar to the last couple of years. You'll note that some of those pre-COVID numbers, and it's sort of hard to see in this graph because the scale is so big because it includes those probationary sentences, but if you drill down on that dark red, which is the Department of Corrections sentences this year, or 2023, it was at 263. If you look at those pre-COVID numbers, that was up in the high 300s even in the low 400s. So it does represent still a significant decrease in who we're sending to Department of Corrections and the way that we're using prison. The next one. So looking at juvenile diversion, the juvenile diversion numbers are down quite a bit, I think for two reasons. The first is that COVID really changed the way that law enforcement and SROs are interacting. A good portion, especially of the lower-level juvenile criminal conduct, is coming out of schools. We ran our juvenile diversion filing numbers and, thank you, juvenile filings, not juvenile diversion filings. And looking at the last couple of years, that's the wrong email. Here we go. Pre-COVID, 2017, 2018, and 2019, our juvenile filings were just a tick under 800 per year. This year and last year, they were about 450. So that represents a really significant decrease in juvenile filings overall. So percentage-wise, we're still diverting about the same percentage of juveniles to our diversion program, but we're really proud that that percentage has kept the same because, of course, what is not coming to us are the very lowest-level things. Fights in schools that they're putting through their own internal discipline and programming, low-level marijuana-type stuff that they are dealing with internally in the schools, or they are sending to other programming, whether that's the Center for Family Outreach or other community partners that's coming before us. We're very supportive of that, those, those non-criminal justice alternatives, and so that's great, they're sending people. That, of course, means those who we are offering diversion to are a more challenging population, and we're still offering them diversion, or some of them at least, and the success rate is still very high for those, those juveniles. So we're very proud that we're able to sort of maintain that approximate 40% diversion rate even with this higher-needs population we have in the system. Then the next one in this slide here is support to victims. This encompasses sort of all the touches we have with victims. So that's in-person meetings, that's phone calls, that's emails, that's letters, that's Zoom meetings, that's every contact we have. This has sort of bounced around over the six, seven years on this slide. I ran specifically our domestic violence numbers and our VRA, Victim Rights Act case numbers to see if those were down, and they weren't. So what I think is happening here in the slight downtick the last couple of years is something probably the commission has heard me mention, which is our time to felony resolution and our number of settings to resolve a case. So when we came out with this data project statewide, one thing that every district attorney's office noticed is that the time to resolve a case across the state had just gone up exponentially. And cases were sitting around, they were wasting resources. Of course, that's not fair to victims, that's not fair to defendants. And so we've really worked hard internally, but also sort of pressed our external partners, whether those are judges, public defenders, to really try to make sure that we're resolving cases as quick as we can. And we've seen that time to felony resolution number really drop pretty significantly quarter to quarter over the last, about year and a half since that project went live. So of course, if we have less hearings, we're going to contact a victim and have the case for a less amount of time, we're going to be contacting that victim a little bit less. But we've still obviously been doing quite a lot of contacts. There's a lot going on in this slide. I'll start at the top, cases receiving diversion. Again, we sort of started the adult diversion program in its current state at the end of the year in 2021, so it's been somewhat consistent. It did drop a little bit this year. Going back and looking at the reasons for that, again, some of that, I think, is due to some of the legislative changes that have been made, and I think some of it is due to the fact that law enforcement knows that we are putting people through diversion, and so that if there is some alternative in the community that can benefit them and, and hold them accountable while learning some lessons to not repeat that behavior, then maybe they can just send that person there instead of filing a case, putting them through our office, stretching that out, wasting resources. And so they've done that. One particular area we've noticed with that is fake ID cases. So now sometimes when minors have been picked up in fake ID cases, law enforcement has been sending them directly to take an alcohol education class, which is what we would have done with diversion because our goal is to get some education for these young people, not to stick them with a criminal record. And so law enforcement has done that, and of course, that's terrific, we're really supportive of that, but that's going to be reflective in, in then who comes to our office and is eligible for those programs. The success rate, though, remains really high of this program. Again, that was at 93% of people completing whatever contract it is. Again, sometimes that's something really minor, like go complete that alcohol education class. Sometimes that's more intense, and that's a little more into the behavioral health realm or substance realm, treatment realm that people are completing. But it's been going very, very well, so we're happy with the success of that program. Then going down to the deferral rates or the deferral numbers in the bottom left, I actually looked at that, and the 2022 number on this slide is not quite right. It's actually about 1,070. And I think that, again, is just that what we call PPI, which was this data project, was still, I think, sort of tweaking the way they collected, calculated some of this when we were all presenting to you last year, and that's when that number was put in there. So I think the accurate number is about 1070 from last year. So it is down just a little bit. I think that's because some of those people are going to diversion programs and some other things instead of the deferred judgments. But that's actually one of the things that we want to look into, and that this data project is going to let us break down a little bit more in terms of where that, where that delta may live. And then the last two are always going to be backdated because to look at the success rate, we're going to look back two years on those deferreds, and then to look at recidivism, we want to look back two years from that. So we should, that means, have the 2021 and 2019 data here today. Unfortunately, we don't. The PPI project leads, the academic folks who are leading that are transferring ownership to the Colorado District Attorney's Council, and that's sort of going on right now. And during that, there's a, there's a lag time in running that, so unfortunately, I don't have those last two data points to present here today. And that is it, happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Gordon. Colleagues, do you have any questions, comments, observations? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, thank you for, for this report and, and for explaining, you know, why the, why the data looks different than it might have in past years. You use a two-year recidivism rate, and it looks like, we, I think we talked about this at Community Corrections Board, but there's, there doesn't seem to be a, a uniform definition of what recidivism is or looks like or how many years it is. So can you just explain why you use two years and correction, Community Corrections and Alternative Sentencing was showing us one year?
Yeah, so I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. In fact, it came up, I think Tim raised at the Community Corrections Board, that there was a committee that was looking at that. I was actually on that committee. I was the DA representative to that committee. In classic fashion, that was a committee that created a committee. And so the bills that came out of that, that haven't passed yet, but that will be introduced this session, one of them at least put some money aside to sort of study recidivism statewide. And the other two bills were to sort of get people together to really sort of drill down on, A, a consistent definition of recidivism, but then, B, some alternative metrics? Because recidivism itself is just not simple, right? I mean, let's say, you know, we have someone that got a deferred judgment for a felony crime, and then, you know, a year and 11 months later, committed a petty theft. That's bad, we don't want that person committing a petty theft, but is that really a failure of the system, for instance, right? Whereas if someone five years later, which is outside this two-year window, committed another felony, well, that person wouldn't be counted, even though that person's committed a worse crime, right? So it's, it gets really complicated, and so one of the bills, too, wanted to look at some alternative metrics, right? Was this person employed two years later? Was this person housed two years later? And some other sort of social factors? So that's all to say, I don't know that two years is better than one year, is better than five years, but two years, I think, is sort of a universally sort of understood metric. This project, all of our data is statewide DA data, so we all had to sort of agree on what that would be across all the DA's offices using this programming, and two years just seemed like a fair timeframe.
Yeah, and I just appreciate understanding that diversion sort of happens at many different levels. So diverted, you know, before, diverted at the school level, diverted, you know, at a police level, and it, so it does seem to make the story that we're doing a better job on not sort of overpolicing and over-sentencing and getting people into a, a system that, that can be complicated and hard to work your way out of. So I, I do like, I mean, I think that that's a good story for us all to tell, so it's a sort of a, you know, it's a, it's, it's the whole tables story, right? Of how we're doing a better job of not, not sending everyone to jail or Department of Corrections. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I appreciate everyone letting me take that other meeting real quick, and it's, I'm really grateful for all the work that all of you do. My question is for Mr. District Attorney. I know that you have increased and done a lot more work in victim services and by providing some more avenues and some, and of course, adding Zion to the team. I'm curious, is that a metric that you think the DA's office should maybe look at referring? Because I do know you refer or connect people to services. I don't know, and it seems like that's an important piece of what you do as well, supporting the victims, and so I'm wondering if that's, not to add more work, but I'm just curious if you thought that might be another measure, just to kind of show the depth and breadth of the things that you do inside your office.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. You know, we sort of went from having almost no data two years ago to now having so much data, and then it's like, oh my gosh, I want to share 200 data points with the commission. And we, we just over the last couple of days in reviewing this, have had that exact conversation about the victim data that, of course, is not a, a really full way of describing what our advocates do, because what they do is on such a personal, emotional level. To say it's 45,000 contacts isn't doing the, the service to that work that they're doing, of course. I don't know that I have a better way. One of the other things that was included a couple of years ago, one of the metrics we changed, was restitution for victims, for instance, which is a really important issue, getting victims restitution, but it was also so tied to like a specific case. You know, if we had one big white-collar case that resulted in a couple hundred thousand dollars, all of a sudden, that skews the years, and it, and it's not really what's going to each individual victim. In terms of referrals to agencies, they're doing that, yeah, hundreds of times a day, probably, or making those referrals. That's not something we track, we, we could look at trying to start that. I don't know if that's really a better gauge than what's on here. Yeah, Zion's great, I don't know how to track what Zion does, but, but he's definitely meeting with victims all the time and has had some real successes lately, but we, we can track how often a child victim pets Zion or something like that.
Or how much, how many times I pet Zion. I just think that would be great if, just to also show that part of your, your, the work that you do, that you're also, and just curious about that, so thank you.
Yeah, we can continue, have that discussion, and CDAC has also been working on their, historically, the, the victim data has not been tracked well through CDAC's systems and through this project, and so they've been sort of working on that, and we're hoping to get our victim department at some point onto that system. And we're, again, a little bit at the mercy of sort of what those fields are, but yeah, we'd love to be able to track more in some way, so we'll, we'll think about that for sure.
Thank you, colleagues. CDAC, Colorado District Attorney's Council, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
We'll now turn it over to the Office of Emergency Management. Ricardo, you're on.
Hi, everybody, my name's Ricardo Perez. I'm with the Laramo County Office of Emergency Management. I'll be sharing about our, actually, yeah. Thank you. I'll be sharing about our three performance measures here today for 2023. So the first performance measure that we have is our OEM self-assessment that we do. Lori Hodges, our director and our team, created this OEM self-assessment to really target and shoot for an exceptional emergency management program. So over the last two years, in 2022, the self-assessment was 5.9 overall. And this, this assessment looks at kind of operations, planning, the four phases of emergency management, mitigation, preparedness, response, recovery, how well are we doing outreach, are we targeting the right folks in the community that need emergency management resources? So in 2022, it was 5.9. In 2023, there was some growth in that, so that performance measure was a 7.3. But I did want to highlight some of the, some of the categories that we use in that OEM self-assessment. So in one of the, one of printouts that I I provided is the OEM self-assessment. So for program planning, there was a 15% increase from 2023 to 2022. Just because we participated in this Colorado Emergency Preparedness Assessment, which is a preparedness assessment from the state of Colorado that involves all the partners within emergency management in Laramie County, and it helps address some of the needs and then some of the things that need to be addressed within the emergency management program. So that was completed in 2023, which is why there's a big 15% increase in that program planning piece. For resource and contract management, in 2023, OEM completed the mutual aid agreement with multiple partners, agencies in Laramie County. So now that's set in place and that's ready to go for any needs. I'll jump down to recovery and continuity. So that remained at an eight, eight out of 10. But there was no growth. It was the same score for both 2022 and 2023. But something that's been worked on in 2023 around recovery and continuity is around damage assessment. So now there's, Laramie County and the municipalities are working on a joint system on how to do damage assessment and have that same process be the same across all jurisdictions. So that's happening. I'll jump down to training and education, which is a large piece of the improvement. So that, that piece had a 48.3 increase, percent increase in 2023, due to the fact that Camille Millard from our office completed and created this Dare to Prepare Community Education Program this year. So this past year, so 20 folks graduated from the community that participated in this community education program that helps them teach about, help learn about self-resiliency, how do we participate in the community, and how to participate with formal institutions, and then how do we better prepare for emergencies. But yeah, that was a big piece of that training and education piece that was done in 2023 from our office. And that's one of the pieces that was improved. And then the last piece that I'll mention about this OEM assessment is for community outreach, the last piece, there was a 22% increase in 2023. And that's largely because we were doing more targeted presentations with community organizations, different groups of the community around preparedness, telling more of the story about what Laramie OEM is, the Office of Emergency Management to people. So yeah, we doubled the trainings and the presentations that we did out in the public. But overall, for this OEM assessment, the total improvement in 2023 was 13%. So yeah, I can take any questions if there are any.
Well, actually, Ricardo, with the utmost respect, we only have about four minutes.
Okay.
So I think what I'd like to suggest is, if you could just go through the high level of these remaining slides.
Sure.
And that we may want to invite Office of Emergency Management back when we have the Sheriff's Office back. Because this is really important stuff. But I'm feeling my crankiness level is going up because we have six minutes. And I'd really like to give this justice to have that conversation.
Awesome. Sure. Yeah, so I'll move along to the community resilience assessment, which
is the second performance measure. So in 2023, we had the same overall score in 2022 and 2023. And one thing that we wanted to share about this community resilience assessment is the more years that we have information about this community resilience assessment, the more that's going to help us down the line. This community resilience assessment tries to gauge the level of resilience within the community. So we're asking questions around, are people connected to their community members? Do they have ways to sign up for emergencies? Do they have an emergency plan for themselves, for their families? So the more time that we have data on this resilience assessment, the better we'll be able to address those needs. But from the two years, especially from 2023, we've heard some responses around resources for people with disabilities. So we've been doing some work in OEM to engage with organizations that serve people with disabilities. And how do we provide emergency preparedness resources effectively to people with disabilities? So yeah, it's helping us highlight some of the needs that we need to do in the community, too. And then the last performance measure is we track the, from the Laramie Emergency Telephone Authority, we track the number of opt-ins that LITA has throughout their comprehensive system of emergency alerts and multiple ways that people get, are able to sign up for alerts, receive alerts throughout the county around emergencies. So there was a decrease in the folks that interacted with the overall emergency system with LITA. That was due to the fact that LITA tested and cleaned up their system in 2023. So they got rid of duplicate profiles and kind of duplicate data, people that had signed up maybe more than once or were just, yeah, old accounts. So that's what that decrease is of maybe 8% from 2022 to 2023 of people that are interacting. But overall, there's about 70% of the population in Laramie County that are interacting with the emergency alerting system. And 28% of the Laramie County population are opted in to those emergency alert opt-ins.
Thank you very much, Ricardo. And I would like to recommend that if we can figure out the scheduling, maybe we could ask our emergency management folks to maybe come back with the Sheriff's Office. Thank you so much for being flexible. I guess one thing I'd like for us to think about, you know, as we continue this conversation, I noticed in the community resiliency, there seemed to be a decrease in level of trust of various institutions. I suppose I'm not surprised. But I'd really like to have a conversation about that.
Yeah, awesome. And the one thing I wanted to mention about the community resilience assessment is we had twice as many responses in 2023 than in 2022. Yeah, we had about 120 responses in 2022, and then 2023, we had about 222. So yeah, we're expanding the way that we ask for that input. So yeah, we're learning more and maybe enabled to do more.
Thank you, Ricardo. And thank you all very much for your, for being here. I appreciate, we appreciate it very much. I think we're going to adjourn at 3:28 PM.